Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. Please write for the Plagueful Legion.
Plagueful Legion, to the play of the United States of America and to the Republic of Asia. One nation, one tribe, individual liberty of Johnson's call.
Sorry.
Court brandy call?
I was talking, I don't know.
Okay. All right, let the record reflect that Director Shorkin is not here. Director Yohan has an excused absence and Director Lotiger, it was here a minute ago. Okay, so she is here somewhere. Okay, there she is. Okay, um, student representation.
Hello. Um, haven't been here in a while. So, every year our American history teacher likes to take his class out. Um, last year we went to the Tower Sudan Mine and it was really interesting. This year they're going to the Glen Sheen Mansion, which now that it's nice out should look very beautiful. And he only takes the juniors and it makes me sad. But beside the point, um, if you didn't know already, the seniors have their all-night grad party coming up. They are looking for money to fund it, so they decided to have a spaghetti feed at the rink from four to seven this Sunday. Um, there's gonna be a raffle, there's gonna be prizes, and all the proceeds go to the all-night grad party so that we can have lots of fun. Um, um, we have the play coming up tomorrow, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Thursday and Friday it will be at seven, um, here in the high school auditorium, and then on Saturday at one. We have four seniors graduating this year, um, the, me included. I started when I was a sophomore, but these guys, like, the other three have been in place since like the seventh grade. And so it's gonna be really hard to like, since this is our last show. But it's really funny, the, it's called Nooses Off, it's a remake of another play. Basically, it's, it's super funny and it gives you kind of an idea of what happens at rehearsal and what happens backstage at the show. And it's really funny and it looks really good. Um, for sports this week, we have Boys at a Golf meet today in Virginia. Thursday, Boys Tennis, um, has a game versus Hibbing here. Girls Golf is at Virginia. Um, Baseball is versus Virginia, I think it's at Virgin, I think it's here now that I think about it. Friday, um, what was that, Boys Golf versus Grand Rapids. Um, we have a track meet at Virginia. We have Boys Tennis versus East Grand Forks at home. And we have Boys Baseball versus Greenway.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, 5.0, agenda additions and deletions. Okay, 6.0, visitor input.
Um, I have Christine Nelson. Do you wanna step up to the podium there?
Hi, my name is Christine Nelson and I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak. It has to do with the upcoming vote on...
May fourteenth. The results of, I did not grow up in this area. I've lived in Minnesota, I've lived outside of Minnesota, came back here. And there's something to be said about coming to the range, coming back to the range. That doesn't mean we need to go backwards. I think this project that is in front of us is an opportunity that we can't let go. Uh, there seems to be some mistruths or misstatements out there. I live in Evleth, failed township, have voted in Evleth elections since I've moved here. We pay our taxes and my husband and I do not have children in school anymore. We are on the, um, getting to the twilight of our, of our, of our working years. So, um, looking at this project as an outsider, I can't see any reason why somebody would think it would be a bad, bad idea to have progress for our students. We are here to help them and we, they are here to learn from it, from us. We don't need to go backwards because we live in a smaller community. You know, when you look at the cities, it's kind of sad that so many of our children leave the area because of what is offered. Um, we need to, we need to keep building and investing in our future and that's what our kids are doing for us. Um, and I, I have one question. When this subject came to the board, as far as votes to bring it to the public for a vote, was it unanimous or was there...
Yes, it was.
Yes, it was.
Okay, um, I, I, I'm informed of some information that there have been meetings conducted, as no meetings, and they're, they're kept private. Not everybody knows about it and it's a little disheartening that something that is, um, going to give progress, not just to our community, but our students and parents, this says a lot for our area. And I, I think it was a disservice and dishonest for the board to vote unanimously and then come to find out that it was actually for not. Um, I am familiar with, um...
Yeah, please keep the names of those individuals.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Keep, keep them quiet?
Well, just don't mention names.
Okay.
Out of respect.
Sure. Um, I wonder if anyone here is familiar with EdWatch or Education Liberty Watch? Cause there's somebody on the board who is entrenched in, in this program quite deeply. And I am shocked and rather disturbed and disheartened that somebody would use our children and their education as a pawn. You don't, you know, if, if my child was in school, I would be even more irate. I'm not irate now, I'm just really disappointed and hurt that someone's special interest of themselves is keeping progress in education away from our students. And I think if somebody's on the board, they are doing it because they wanna make a positive impact, not a negative impact. When I went to high school, I didn't know what I wanted to be at eighteen. My goodness, some people do, some people don't. I kinda knew, but I wasn't sure. I didn't wanna go to a four-year college. We can't all go to a four-year college. If I would've had the, um, the, the opportunity that these kids will have, there would've been no problem what I wanted to do. I would've been geared in a much more secure path than I was, than I took myself. And I, I would like to impress upon the board to please find out what's really going on before this vote takes place. And I think you'll probably see in some information that you have, that two letters were written. And, um, it's, it's public information now, but the, the information that was given by the state about this collaboration is not false. What they give us is true information. And it does nobody any good except for the parties interested to be giving misstatements or false statements. We can't do that to our kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Yvonne, did you wanna speak?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead and state your name.
Sure.
Hi. My name is Yvonne Larson and I am here as a parent, resident in the district. I work at the school, I coach kids at the school, I'm on PTA treasurer. So, um, I just have a few things to say and I know that the, the audience doesn't know, but I have been in communication with the board members. I've sent them my concerns each individually, so they're not probably surprised to see my face here. But I just wanted to reiterate in a more public forum, and I wrote it down so I wouldn't forget to say anything. After a short conversation with our superintendent this afternoon, I understand more clearly the who and why that surrounds the choosing of Site A for the elementary school. I also now know that as a board, you have the authority to alter that location as you see fit, either like right now or down the road, whenever. As you are all aware, because I've reached out to you, I am here to try and shed some light on why I think it is in the best interest of everyone involved to really put thought into changing that decision to Site G, located just behind the Nell Sheen, Evleth Gilbert Junior High, which is not to say to remodel that campus at all. That is a total different parcel of land, it's a forty acre. It's not that I wanna see a school remodeled. Um, I'm still in favor of having the, having a brand-new school for the elementary kids as well. And I'm a hundred percent in favor of the referendum, just in case you don't know that. I, what my biggest fear is, is that the referendum is not gonna pass and it's gonna come down to small little things like this. And I feel like, why take the chance and throw away an opportunity like this when you can make a difference and you can help make this vote an overwhelming yes vote on the fourteenth? Let's see. I'm also here to encourage you that the best timing to make such a change is right now because with the vote starting on Monday and the superintendent's offices and official polls on May fourteenth, the amount of no votes that would change to a yes are substantial in my community. And I for one am sincerely worried that it will absolutely make a difference, whether the entire referendum will pass or fail. I just can't understand why anyone would think that the best way to pass the referendum would be to close schools in three communities and propose to build three replacement schools in two of those communities, leaving the third, who already seems to have a feeling of being taken over and pushed out, so to speak, without the pride of having a school within their community. Let's see. Hang on just a second, I'm sorry. I can, um, I'm gonna revert to the email that I sent to you guys, but these guys did not get to see that. Part of my statements in there is just a personal one. It's not necessarily something I've heard from any other voters, but I can see a definite drawback to having all the children in a district located in one small area and that is safety. With the Academies High School next to E-Rats, next to an EG Elementary, if one goes on lockdown, they could all be in immediate danger. They would all have to go on lockdown. If there was any kind of natural disaster coming, like straight winds or tornadoes or whatever, they would all also, it's having all of your ducks in one basket, so to speak. And I just feel very anxious, safety-wise, to have them all right there next to each other. And I know that we used to live in a time when danger wasn't something that was on the parents' mind, when they send us out the door to school, but that has definitely changed. Um, and I'm gonna repeat one more time, I know I've repeated it a lot. I feel like this statement is worth repeating and this also came from our superintendent. I've seen this, school districts have to consolidate, which has led to communities left with bad feelings. This time is different. But I can tell you right now, in Gilbert, it's not different. They feel exactly that way. And if the EG Elementary School was placed at Site G, behind the current Nell Sheen and Junior High, I feel like then it would be true. I think Virginia would have the new upper elementary that they desperately need. Gilbert would have the school that they are so prideful in having and they really would support this referendum, no matter how they feel about taxes or whether we do consolidate with Virginia or any of that. I feel like if there is a school within Gilbert, that they will vote yes. And I also can tell you right now, I've said it a couple of times, I personally would go and knock on every single door and say, listen, they really think that this community is a part of our school district and an integral part at that. And you need to vote yes. But I can't do that right now, I feel like my hands are tied. Because in the ten and a half years that I've lived here and I went through, six years ago, I was on all the committees to join all the grades together. So no longer a Nell Sheen and a Franklin, but a middle school and an elementary school as it stands now. And I can't tell you how much I was berated for that. And I knew it was what was best for our children and I still hold strong to that, but I don't feel like putting this referendum at risk of failing in an, and it's not out and outward effort of leaving a community out, but I can tell you right now, that's how they feel. And I just really think that you should consider the, uh, the option that stands before you because you have every authority to change that location, that you really look inside and, and try to decide if that really might help give this referendum the push that it needs to have a real huge backing. I don't wanna go to sleep on, or to get up on the fourteenth and wonder, is this gonna pass or is it not gonna pass? I would really rather know in my heart of hearts that the communities are all in favor of this and it's gonna pass with flying colors. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else, Jeff?
Nobody else.
Okay, moving along, approve the, approve the agenda, 7.0.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Sather.
Support.
Support by Lotiger. Any other discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, 8.0, approve the judiciary report for the second check writing of April.
Pretty short and sweet report. Um, in your packet, you have information detailing total expenditures of a hundred ninety-three thousand, two hundred twenty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. And that's basically it.
Can I get a motion to approve the judiciary's report for the second check writing of April?
Four.
We need a motion.
Get a mo, motion, motion by? No, can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion, we approve the judiciary's report as presented.
Oh, then I'll second. So, motion by Generalini, second by Addy. Uh, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nine point oh, consent agenda. A, approve the meeting minutes and B, approve Jessica Crowley for prom's advisor. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by, moved by Matt and support by Lotiger. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, ten point oh, there was no, there was no, um, any, I have to move from the consent agenda. Eleven point oh, personnel. Jeff?
We gotta read the first one.
Okay, eleven point one, approve notice of retirement for Gail Rozell.
Mr. Chair, Gail Rozell is an employee of, of Everwood Gilbert. Um, thirty-nine years ago when she started, the NLC didn't exist as a organization. School, individual school districts held contracts for those people. It was, it was kind of a loose organization. So, she's one of the holdovers from that, in that era, in the deaf and hard-of-hearing specialist area. So she's going to retire now after thirty-nine years. And she's a wonderful person, I worked with her for a long time. Hope she has a great retirement. And I, this is one of those instances where I'm not gonna ask you to post her replacement because we won't hold that contract any longer, she'll go to the NLC.
I'll make a motion to approve the notice of retirement for Gail Rozell.
Motion by?
Lotiger, thanks.
Yep, motion, and I'll second it. So, motion by Lotiger, second by Addy, all, all in favor? Or any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, eleven point two, approve the notice of retirement for David Jas, Jansen?
Um, Mr. Jansen was, uh, for the last three years, the part-time constable over in the Gilbert campus. Um, he's go, he's going to try out retirement now. I, again, this is a position that I'm not gonna recommend posting at the moment until we decide what the administrative structure is, um, in, within a month here. So, that'll be all lumped in there, so we'll just, for tonight, we'll just approve his retirement.
I'll make the motion.
So, motion by Lotiger, second by Generalini. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I just wanna see, this, this guy drove from Duluth every single day?
Every other day.
Every other day? For how many years?
Three. Well, actually, he was out in the southeast for a really long time.
Okay, that's dedication, drive from Duluth every day. Um, okay, moving on to twelve point oh. Uh, twelve point one, resolutions six eighty-one through six eighty-four relating to the termination of non-renewal of teaching contracts and probationary teachers.
Uh, Mr. Chair, these resolutions are for, we talked about these at study session prior to the meeting. These are all individuals with licensing issues that force the board to terminate them at the end of the year. If the positions are still available after July first and there hasn't been a licensed person that has applied, they could potentially come back. We have to do, uh...
Roll call.
We have to do a roll call on, on that one.
Okay, so, resolution number six eighty-one. Uh, Kelly?
Resolution number six eight one, resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract of Alyssa Blake, a probationary teacher. Whereas Alyssa Blake is a probationary teacher in Independent School District Number two one five four, be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number two one five four that pursuant to Minnesota statutes one two two eight point four zero, the teaching contract of Alyssa Blake, a probationary teacher in Independent School District Number two one five four is hereby terminated at the close of the current two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen school year.
So you need a motion and a second and then take a roll call vote?
Can I get a motion to terminate Alyssa Blake as a probationary teacher at the end of the school year?
So moved.
Moved by, moved by, um, Matt, I'll second by Addy. Uh, any more discussion? Can I get a roll call vote?
Director Scholberg?
Aye.
Director Lotiger?
Yes.
Myself, Director Sather's a yes. Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Generalini?
Yes.
And Director Yohan and Director Shorkin are absent. So passes with five yeses.
Okay, moving on, resolution number six eighty-two, resolution relating to the termination of non-renewal of the teaching contract of Bradley Manki, a probationary teacher.
Whereas Bradley Manki is a probationary teacher in Independent School District Number two one five four, be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number two one five four that pursuant to Minnesota statutes one two two eight point four zero, the teaching contract of Bradley Manki, a probationary teacher in Independent School District Number two one five four, is hereby terminated at the close of the current two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen school year.
Can I get a motion to approve this termination of Bradley Manki at the end of the, our school year?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Lotiger?
Question.
Thank you.
Support by Scholberg? Uh, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Any discussion?
Oh, any discussion, excuse me. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Director Lotiger?
Yes.
Myself, Director Sather's a yes. Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Generalini?
Yes.
Director Scholberg?
Yes.
And Director Yohan and Director Shorkin are absent, five yeses.
All right, moving along, resolution six eighty-three, resolution relating to the termination of non-renewal of the, of the teaching contract of Julie Lindeman, a probationary teacher.
Whereas Julie Lindeman is a probationary teacher in Independent School District Number two one five four, be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number two one five four that pursuant to Minnesota statutes one two two eight point four zero, the teaching contract of Julie Lindeman, a probationary teacher in Independent School District Number two one five four, is hereby terminated at the close of the current two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen school year.
Can I get a motion for the termination of Julie Lindeman, a probationary teacher?
I'll move.
Moved by Sather, second by Generalini. Any discussion? Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Director Sather's a yes. Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Generalini?
Yes.
Director Scholberg?
Yes.
Director Lotiger?
Yes.
And Director Yohan and Director Shorkin are absent. The resolution passes with five yeses.
Moving along, resolution six eighty-four, resolution relating to the termination of a non-renewal of a teaching contract of Ellen Williams, a probationary teacher.
Whereas Ellen Williams is a probationary teacher in Independent School District Number two one five four, be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number two one five four that pursuant to Minnesota statutes one two two eight point four zero, teaching contract of Ellen Williams, a probationary teacher in Independent School District Number two one five four, is hereby terminated at the close of the current two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen school year.
Can I get a motion to approve the termination of Ellen Williams, a probationary teacher, at the end of the school year?
I'll move.
Support.
Support by Sather, or motion by Sather, support by Lotiger. Any discussion?
I, I just, you had mentioned she would qualify for a tier one license?
Yep, yeah, on, on July first, if, if nobody has applied for that position, we could, she could, she's eligible for a tier one.
Okay, so there's not like a time, a certain amount of time that she can, um, I know in the past there's been discussion about how long somebody can be a community expert. We don't have to worry about that or...
The community expert option is gone. Um, and is there a limit on tier ones? There's no limit on tier ones. There's no limit on tier ones right now. But it has to be renewed every year, that's the thing. Just cause she gets one in July doesn't mean she can keep it.
Okay, any more discussion on resolution number six eighty-four? Okay, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Generalini?
Yes.
Director Scholberg?
Yes.
Director Lotiger?
Yes.
And Director Sather's a yes. Director Yohan and Director Shorkin are absent today. So the resolution six eight four passes with five yeses.
All right. Thirteen point oh, old business. Uh, thirteen point one, update on the National Insurance.
Uh, Mr. Chair, it was requested that the board, um, have a meeting, work-study session with National Insurance, um, so we can see that as a possibility and we do have one set up right now for May sixth at four thirty, right here in this room. I will inform the heads of the two bargaining units that they would be welcome to come as well.
I will be absent for that meeting, just so you're aware.
I also will be absent.
It's just informational, sir.
All righty, uh, thirteen point two, select date for policy committee.
Mr. Chair, it was requested that we have, uh, set a date for the policy committee and, which I would definitely concur with, but I, I guess I would hope that the board would, this is something that we could push off until at least June. I mean, I just, I don't have time to prepare it right now.
So...
So I mean, if we could look at...
June, July sometime?
Yeah. That'd be better.
And you will inform the board of, of the date that works best for you?
Sure.
Okay. Thirteen point three, update on the joint powers agreement.
Um, I had mentioned earlier, um, I have a meeting set up with, with Noel over in Virginia, um, with Josh Hegem of Pemberton Law out of Fergus Falls, um, on April thirtieth at eight fifteen in the morning. It's a phone conversation. He's gonna get us moving in the right direction, is what we have to do. He was recommended to us by, by MSBA. We did contact MSBA and asked, you know, who they would recommend to, cause we, we can't have anyone, for a joint powers agreement, we can't have anyone that we're currently associated with do it, um, for conflict of interest between the two districts. So we have to pick a neutral third party and, and this is what MSBA is recommending. So we'll meet with him and hopefully get the ball rolling on that.
And you'll meet with him as a superintendent, so you'll meet with him?
Yep.
Okay. All right, very good.
I have a question on that. Is, um, is there a, a template or have similar type joint powers agreements been negotiated between districts or just kind of in general, why, oh, he's the, the expert? I think it's great. I mean, I, I think it's great that we're getting going on that, but I mean, how, how did he or...
He, this is apparently his thing, so I mean, this isn't, we aren't the first district that's knocked on his door and said, hey, we, we got, uh, we got some issues and we need a, we need help with a joint powers agreement. So he's, he's familiar with it, apparently, this is what MSBA tells us. And, uh, he's the guy in the state, so we're gonna go with him. We're gonna, well, we're gonna meet with him, see what, what he says.
Excellent, I think it's a very good step to be proactively taking.
Yep. All righty, thirteen point four, update on staff development, academic advisor committee.
We have a meeting set up with MDE, the workshop, for May twentieth at five o'clock, um, right here in this room.
Okay, and where are we gonna be?
People make it great, that's, that's, again, is informational.
I, I will not. I will be celebrating my anniversary with my husband.
What, what time is it?
Five o'clock. You could bring him with.
Yeah.
Good times.
Nothing says anniversary like an MDE.
Nothing says anniversary like a school board meeting.
That was May twentieth?
Yeah.
How many years?
Nineteen.
All right.
Twenty-nine together.
That's good. Impressive.
Yeah, I guess.
All righty, moving... All righty, moving right along. Fourteen point oh, we'll hear the administrative report. Information.
Here we go. So, our enrollment is the same as it was the last time I talked to, at eight eighty-two today. Um, a couple things on the collaboration. So, last night, uh, they met in Bywawick Township. I believe, uh, Mr. Addy stepped in for me admirably.
It was good. It was good.
It was good.
Very good.
And tonight, as we speak, there's one going on in the Gilbert VFW. Just apparently the person scheduling these things doesn't like me. But, that's all right. I'm sure Noel's holding the fort down there. I will be in Fayette Township tomorrow night. And the following week, on May second, I'm at the Chamber of Commerce. That's what I have scheduled.
Okay.
Well, no. And May second, that night, I have a Lutheran church. Didn't write that down.
So, just say no. I'm gonna scoot on out of here and go meet Noel.
All right. Um, a couple other things. We did get our review, positive review and comment back. Um, it was published in the paper today on time. That's all good. I showed you the letter of intent from the City of Ellis to negotiate in good faith on a piece of property, and Virginia has one of those as well. We are gonna have, by statute, we have to have a public meeting on the review and comment in case anybody wants to come. And, uh, and, uh, have anything to say about that, there's another chance to comment. We're gonna do that in a joint meeting at the Northeast Service Co-op on May second, at five o'clock. And if that one is over, and you're probably, Kelly's looking at me like you already committed to the Lutheran church that night, and that is correct. And if we go over, I will go over to the Lutheran church, and Noel will take care of this one. Am I wrong about that schedule? What am I wrong about? For the Lutheran church?
Yeah.
Oh.
I can do that, too. I was trying to get on to the review and comment.
I realize that, but-
Why don't you schedule something at me, too? Either way, we'll get her done. Get her going on up on May second, too. May second's a bugger for her. I mean, I'm gonna be busy. Uh, a couple upcoming events with Franklin on May third, the second grade's going to the Forest History Center on May tenth, the third grade's going to the Great Lakes Aquarium for Mrs. Terrio's last trip to the Great Lakes Aquarium. She loves going to the Great Lakes Aquarium. And then on May sixteenth, the kindergarten's going to the Children's Museum, and on May seventeenth, the first grade is going to Lake Superior Zoo. And thank you to the PTA for sponsoring all those trips. Couple other things. On May tenth, we have the K through two spring concert up in the auditorium here at one o'clock. And twenty-second and twenty-third, weather permitting, we're gonna have track of field data for all those folks. You guys ready?
Ready. Well, today, we had some seventh graders making the cut for citizenship in Gilbert. Alex Gunderson, Maria Derrick, and Zelena Ortiz. Congratulations to them. Maria, just on a side note, was shaking furiously when she was cutting off my tie, but survived. Uh, sixth graders, last week, we had citizenship, Anna Westby, Mitchell Tansky-Sedgman, and William Kemp. Congratulations to them. And some upcoming events coming up. I didn't go as far as Mr. Carey, but in the next week, in the following, uh, April twenty-sixth, it's a preschool spring sing. It's by class, so they're scheduled with, with each classroom. Uh, Tuesday, April thirtieth, we have the seventh grade going to the Minnesota Discovery Center, and they'll be exploring some STEM program information out there. Wednesday, May first, Drug Prevention Speaker Ray Lozano will be in our district. He'll be in Gilbert at one o'clock from, for the sixth through eighth graders. On that same day, our fifth graders begin their LEC experience for three days. We wish them luck. And Friday, May third, the sixth grade field trip to the Minnesota Discovery Center for the Minnesota and Iron Range History Program. So, thank you.
I should also mention that Ray Lozano, he's sponsored by the Everglot, 'cause he'll be on this campus in the morning, and he'll go over to Gilbert. And then at night, he'll be down in the auditorium, the Everglot Auditorium for a community presentation.
And our student rep stole two of my slides here. So, she already spoke about the spring play. The director is Jeremy Limata. So, just to recap that. And then she also stole the, uh, Mr. Burt and the junior class going to the Glenn Sheen. Um, but the, a couple other things that are coming up. Spring concert, band and choir concert will be on Thursday, May ninth, at seven PM. And then our orchestra concert will be in Virginia on Monday, May thirteenth. And we also are having an eighth grade orientation, where the eighth graders will come over on Thursday, May sixteenth, and we're having our Minnesota Honor Society take the reins of that group and that orientation program and, um, running with it for that Thursday.
And May fourth is prom?
Oh, May fourth is prom, Saturday, yes. I gotta bring that up.
I got a kid going this year, it's depressing.
Yeah, he's in a chaperone, too.
He's gonna spend money.
Mm-hmm.
That's all we have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All righty, okay, uh, board member topics. I just wanna say that on these board member topics, we gotta keep it positive. I guess things got kinda out of, not out of hand, but let the last board member topics, we kinda went on and on and on. I just wanna make everybody aware, especially at the board, at the board here, that it's about the feel-good things, what's going on good in the community. So, we'll kinda, kinda keep it to that, okay? 'Cause I don't wanna get into administrative stuff. This is all about feel-good things, like I said. So, on that note, Matt?
Phil, you stole my thunder. Um, you know, the, the, the sun is out, the golf courses are opening. Um, my favorite collegiate goalie, Ananti, is coming back for his, for his senior season. Um, so everything is good, but-
That's almost amazing.
Yeah.
Isn't that amazing?
Yeah.
'Cause he could be making some money.
Absolutely. But, I, I, I just, and I, I need to, and, uh, um, you know, a- address, you know, the, um, collaboration a little bit just before. And this is positive. I mean, I'm, I mean, we have a, a opportunity here, something that would transform the Iron Range, in my opinion, unlike anything in the last sixty years, since the process to get ore out of Pakena or out of, liberate the, whatever it was that Dr. Davis did. But, anyhow, um, you know, and the informational pieces, and I've, I've spoken with, with Jeff a little bit, there are just a, a couple of things that, um, you know, I, I, I look at and-
I got him to change it.
What, that?
I got him to change it.
Oh, you did?
Yep.
Well, I only looked at it the one time.
You'll see a change this weekend.
Okay, excellent. But just a, a couple of really quick, and then we'll, um, a- as far as, you know, I, I don't know that the, you know, with the project that's as important to the, the, the commissioner, particularly Senator Bach, when you, you see what he feels about the project, that, um, certainly, I hope we don't get there, but should there not be a positive vote, I'm not convinced that Di triple R B money is gone. Um, the, the, the second one is, you know, there was some, uh, alluding that somehow the Site A was chosen as something that was neutral or politically expedient to the board. Um, I voted for that, given the information that we had at the time, which, um, is somewhat limited, and it still is somewhat limited. And we need to get a lot more information as far as that goes. Um, but it, it, it doesn't, it, it takes a lot of money to do that. And until you know you have the money to do that, um, you know, how, how far down the road do you wanna go? And, um, and then I, I, I think the, the third thing that I, I thought was the most important is, um, you know, and again, I'm gonna sound like a broken record on this, is this vote is about building a, a new elementary school and, and a, for our district, and a joint facility between us and Virginia. And what happens after we get a positive vote is, we got a lot of work to do. Um, I'm glad, very happy to hear we're getting a start on a joint powers agreement, but that's gonna be a complex agreement to enter into, and that's gonna take a lot of time. The facilities are gonna have to be designed before you can even think about the, the construction. There's a lot of work that's done before that. I guess what I'm trying to say is, there's an awful lot of stuff that needs to be done, and we have to be ready to move into that facility, operating as two independent districts. And the time for talk on consolidation, which I believe should happen, um, I don't know when, but this isn't about that at all. This is about an opportunity we have to get new facilities, provide new opportunities for our kids. And I think it's premature to be talking about that. I think it's premature to be talking about, uh, mascots and colors, and what are we gonna name the thing? That's, those are all easy things that are gonna happen naturally in a process that's gonna be open and transparent to everyone. And also, I mean, regarding the, the consolidation, I certainly want to support a vote of consolidation that did not include a vote of the public. Not, the seven of us shouldn't make that decision. That's something that I feel very strongly needs to get a positive vote by the, the public, so.
At a separate time.
At a sep- yes, a- absolutely. That's, I mean, it-
I know what you're trying to clarify and make clear, so I just wanted to reiterate that that's a separate conversation in separate time.
This is a process.
And I'm sorry if I- I'm sorry if I, I went against your, uh, and I agree with what you said-
Yeah.
-regarding board member updates. And I promise to abide by that in the future.
Okay. Well, but that was, that's good information, though, Matt. There was probably nobody here that wasn't like tuned into what you were saying. You know, I mean, I was tuned into it, so.
Thank you.
I think everybody was tuned into what you were saying, Matt.
Thanks.
Thank you. And it was positive, you're-
It was.
Kinda be positive.
Okay.
Um, I really don't have a whole lot. Um, I have seen on Facebook that, um, Lori-
It's on Facebook, it isn't true.
Lori Quapla has been posting art pictures from the younger grades, and I think that is very cool. I would enjoy seeing my kids' art, um, on there, too. So, I just wanna give her a little bit of kudos for that.
And we're pretty certain that was true.
That is true.
Okay.
That's true.
Um, gosh, I don't have, I, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I still feel like the weather's great. That helps with everyone's moods at my work, at, it just helps. It doesn't hurt anyone. Um, I think, you know, just being good, kind people, and reminding us regardless, and I get that this, this stuff is hard for people, and, and all this talk that we're doing, and the work that we're doing, it's hard. And it's, and it evokes emotions from people. And, and I get it, and, um, born and raised in Everglot, I mean, I, but I think just, you know, being kind to people, hearing what people have to say, not assuming negative intentions is huge. And, um, keep our focus on what's best for our kids, and let that be our guiding light, and-
Well, thank you. Well, I had the opportunity of sitting with Noel last night at the Bywawick Town Hall. Very, a very informative listening session with some folks from, actually, my neck of the woods. It was very, it was upbeat and positive. I mean, there was just some, there were some concerns about traffic, and that has always come up. Other than that, I got to sit with Jeff last week with my wife and your wife, and we watched the speech team. Was that right? Yeah, we watched the speech team two weeks ago, right?
Two weeks ago, yeah. The, Mr. Ginsmacher had all the, all the state participants speak in town, and it was kind of cool.
How did they do it, by the way?
State is a little more difficult in sections.
Yeah.
But they all did well.
Okay. They bringing home any harbor?
No.
Oh, okay, that's unfortunate. Okay, and then Ms. Larson, point well taken. Uh, I hope that this board, maybe if something happens, we can give that some thoughtful consideration to your, to your, your, not speech, but your, your-
Input, comment, input.
Yeah, your visitor input. Okay, and we'll hopefully, we'll look into it. And that's it, that's all I have. All righty, um, that ends our board meeting on sixteen point oh. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I will.
Second.
Okay.
Motion by Lotteger, second by Scholberg. This meeting is now adjourned.